Good evening, everyone. Today is March 8th, 2022. This is a special meeting of the Cupertino City Council. It is now 6:00 PM. Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call?
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Paul?
Here. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And so for this special meeting, there are two this evening. And so this one is a continuation of the items that we did not reach on our regularly scheduled March 1st, 2022 meeting of the Cupertino City Council. So those were items number 11 and number 12. And so we will go and proceed with item number 11. And we've allocated 45 minutes for that. Item number 12 has an hour allocated. Those are hard allocations in the sense that we have a noticed meeting for 7:45 PM. And so I will hold us to those time limits. Item number one on our special meeting this evening is item number 11 from the March 1st regular meeting, and that's to consider the fiscal year 2022/2023 council goals. Nope, wrong agenda, which was to consider accepting the mid-year financial report for fiscal year 2021 to 2022 and consider adopting resolution number 22-032 approving a budget modification. That's enumerated number 2122-189, and which will also increase appropriations by $9,457,951 and revenues by $10,220,000. And so Mr. City Manager Jim Troop, would you like to introduce the staff presentation here?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, we're going to be presenting tonight, as the mayor said, and I'll have Christina Alfaro, our Administrative Services Director, do the presentation for us.
Great. Welcome, Director Alfaro.
Mayor Paul, let's just enter presentation mode here quickly. All right, here we go. Good evening, Mayor Paul. Councilmembers Christina Alfaro, Director of Administrative Services, here with you this evening along with Thomas Leung, Senior Management Analyst with Administrative Services, to present the mid-year financial report. Before we get started with the presentation, I want to acknowledge department directors and their staff for all their hard work they put into putting this budget document together. In addition, I want to thank City Manager Jim Troop for his support as well. This is, you know, Thomas and I are here before you this evening presenting this report to you, but it really is a group effort, as most of our budget documents are. So getting right into the presentation, our agenda for this evening, we're going to be covering the budget reporting cycle. We're going to be going over how we got to the amended budget as of December 1st, 2021. We'll then take a more narrow focus, looking at the general fund and providing an update. We'll go over how we spent American Rescue Plan Act dollars. We'll go over recommended adjustments before you this evening, and then we will go over recommended actions and next steps. And finally, just give a little bit of information on our transparency and engagement efforts related to the budget. So here is our budget reporting cycle. And really, the big takeaway here is we're before council presenting different aspects of the budget, a minimum of five times. We're currently in the outlined maroon box mid-year, where we present the first six months of the fiscal year. We'll be before you again in May to finish off the reporting for the current fiscal year and kick off the reporting for next fiscal year with our proposed budget. When we look at the fiscal year 22 amended budget as of December 31st, 2021, that number totals 229.2 million. And we're just going to show you quickly how we got there, and then we'll go into a little more detail on the next slide. And so we started the proposed budget at 121 million. We adopted the budget at 148.8 million, so an increase of 27.8 million. And this was really primarily for city work program items that were not added at the time of the proposed, along with capital improvement program or CIP funding, which, again, we're not ready at the time that the proposed budget was printed. Since budget adoption, we've had adjustments of 80.4 million dollars, and we're going to cover those on the next slide. So this chart here, we start off by fund, and the first column shows the adopted budget, so the 148.8 that I had mentioned. When we look, the first column over will be carryovers, and a carryover really relates to an appropriated budget amount from the previous year that gets carried over into the current year and must be used for the original purpose for which it was allocated. Next, we get to encumbrances, and encumbrances are generally related to a PO or some sort of agreement where we've agreed to pay. Those get carried over at year end as well. And then, so you take those two, and to those we add any budget adjustments approved by city council in the first and second quarter of the fiscal year. Those are 9.6 million, and you add those along the bottom up, and we get to the 29.2 million that is our current amended budget as of December 31st. So when I was talking about the amended budget, we're looking at the total budget that the city has, so that's across all funds, as you may have noted in the table that I showed previously. When we're looking, what we want to do now is take a quick focus and narrow in on the general fund, and we do that for a few reasons. It's the largest fund the city has. It's mainly tax-supported fund, and this is also where the city council has the most discretion with how to use these dollars. And what we like to do when we look at our general fund is conduct some trend analysis. So the chart that you see before you, you see revenue comes first. The non-bolded numbers represent the last three years, on average, where we've been for revenues in the general fund at the midpoint of the year. The bold number is representative of where we are in the current year. And so revenues as of December 31st, 2021 were 45.7 million or 34% of estimated revenues. And this placed, so revenue at the mid-year point of the prior three years had been between 44 and 34%, placing this year at the lower end of the range. When we looked at expenditures as of December 31st, we are 50.5 million or 41% of budgeted appropriations. And expenditures at the midpoint of the prior three years had a range between 44 and 62, placing this year's revenue slightly below the range. And in the upcoming slide, we'll get into a little more detail about why we're seeing these variances. So the table before you shows general fund revenues in the current fiscal year compared to the last fiscal year for the same six months of the fiscal year. Overall, revenues are down almost 800,000 or 2%. I do want to point out that the mid-year financial report does actually call out each of these categories and gives you an explanation for the variance. This evening, though, I'm going to focus primarily on sales tax, transient occupancy tax, and other taxes and intergovernmental revenue. This is where the largest, we're seeing the largest variance. When it comes to sales tax, as of mid-year, we're 10.2 million or 43% less than we were last year. And this is really just a timing of payment issue from the state. Once we receive the second payment and apply it to this timeframe, we think we'll be pretty close to where we were before. The other thing I want to point out for sales tax is, as you may remember from previous presentations, the cities has a very high concentration of our sales tax in business-to-business, and in turn, that concentration drives our large share of the county pool taxes. But I wanted to report some good news based on a meeting with our sales tax consultant, HDL, that we're seeing a strong recovery in all of our other areas, and a lot of times, all of our other tax, sales tax areas. A lot of times, that gets eclipsed because our business-to-business and our pool allocations are so large, but I wanted to make sure we pointed that out. Transient occupancy tax, this is line number 15, or the third line down. This is our biggest tax source that has been impacted by the pandemic and the shelter-in-place orders. As of December 31st, the city recognized 1.3 million in transient occupancy tax, which represents 45% of the total amount budgeted in fiscal year 21/22. It also represents an increase of 52% over the mid-year point of fiscal year 21, and this indicates a recovery consistent with staff estimates for this tax category. In other taxes, we have a decrease of approximately 648,000, and this is mainly due to a one-time construction tax payment from PSI storage, excuse me, in fiscal year 21. As for intergovernmental revenue and transfers, I'm taking these together because it's really the main impact here that's causing the increase in 2.4 million and 4.8 million respectively is really related to the American Rescue Plan Act dollars. And we will cover that in the subsequent slide as well. Moving on to our expenditure categories, expenditures are up 9.2 million or 22%. Again, consistent with how we presented the revenue side, there are, right, explanations for these variances in the staff report for all of the other categories, but I'm going to focus on salary and benefits, contract services, and transfers out. When we look at employee compensation and benefits, we're up approximately 1.8 million dollars. And the increases are due to a variety of reasons. We had our last increase per the labor contracts that were approved by council in July 2019. We added six different positions as part of the final budget. In addition, we've also brought in our contract city attorney into an in-house city attorney as well. And the last thing really is our pay period. So last fiscal year 21, we had had 12 pay periods to date for our first six months of the fiscal year, and this year we have 13. And it will vary from year to year. Normally, we're kind of lined up with the 12, and this year it just happened to be one of the years where we had 13 pay periods instead of the 12 in the six months. So all of that should true up by the time we get to year end. When it comes to contract services, these have increased approximately 324,000 or 3%, and this is due primarily to increases in the city sheriff's contract with the county. The increases were offset by reductions due to the city attorney function moving from contract to in-house, as I had previously mentioned in the compensation and benefits section. Transfers out have increased approximately 6 million dollars or 59%. And these are due to a one-time transfer out within the general fund for the American Rescue Plan Act. Next is the City Managers Discretionary Fund, and so per direction given by council at the final adopted budget, we have included these updates as part of our quarterly budget reports. So just as a reminder, the budget was adopted at 75,000. To date, there's only been one expense, and that's 2,400 used to assist with funding for the housing op-ed. And staff will continue to report out on the use of this fund as part of our quarterly reports. Next is the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. As you might recall, we received 9.7 million dollars in ARPA funding. In the current fiscal year, we've received 4.8 million. On September 7th, staff recommended and city council approved the allocation of 4.8 in funding toward revenue loss. And most of this is really built around our transient occupancy tax revenue loss, and we have until December 31st, 2023 to claim these revenues, which we, staff is confident we'll be able to do. To date, we've recognized 3.1 million in revenue. And as council may recall, so even though we're getting revenue in through this act, we need to be able to show expenses to offset these, to offset this revenue and how we're using it. And so how council had approved us using it is, one, to fund work program items, and then the second was really related to other administrative costs that would have normally been funded with these tax revenues. And so the slide before you just shows where we are to date. Next, we have the mid-year budget adjustment summary by fund, and we just wanted to provide a quick overview by fund of where the dollars are being requested overall. As Mayor Paul mentioned at the beginning of this item, for your consideration this evening, we have 10.2 million dollar adjustment in revenues and a 9.5 million dollar adjustment for expenditures. If both the revenues and expenditures are approved this evening, the result will be 762,049 dollar increase to fund balance across all funds. And with that, I'll hand it over to Thomas, who will take us through the remainder of the presentation.
Thank you, Christina. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. On this slide, we have a look at the proposed mid-year adjustments. We'll be discussing these in more detail in the slides to come. First of all, CIP is requesting 910,000 for pre-development work at Lawrence Midi Park. This pre-development work includes coordination efforts to relocate trespassers, removal and disposal of approximately 3,300 cubic yards of debris, and tree trimming. Also, CIP is requesting a 1.8 million dollar budget reduction for the all-inclusive play area. In early 2021, staff issued a memo to city council with an update on that project. It was noted in that memo that the original 2 million dollar donation goal was too high, and staff worked with the county to adjust the project scope accordingly. Public Works is also requesting 350,000 for consulting services to conduct preliminary work on the soon-expiring landfill agreement with ecology. This includes the potential renewal of the agreement or routing construction and demolition debris to a separate facility and routing materials through a materials recovery facility. Additionally, Public Works staff is requesting 26,000 to replace all city leaf blowers to comply with the city's ordinance going into effect in November 2022. Now we move on to Parks and Recreation. Parks and Recreation is requesting 10,300 for tree maintenance. This is for the golf course because due to the continued drought, more tree maintenance is needed to reduce the risk to golf course users. Additionally, Parks and Recreation is requesting an increase of 220,000 in revenue as well as a 9,350 dollar increase to expenditures. This is because the golf course has received more play and revenues are above fiscal year 2022 budget estimations as a result of the pandemic. And an additional 9,000 expenditures will fund additional bank fees associated with them. In accordance with the city's committed unassigned and one-time use policy, staff are requesting 10 million be transferred from general fund unassigned fund balance to the city's capital reserve. These dollars will remain in the capital reserve until recommendations are brought before council and council approves the appropriations of these dollars. Staff are also recommending a few fund balance adjustments. First, staff are recommending the fourth of five contributions to the city's Section 115 pension trusts. This would bring total contributions to the trust to 16 million. And as of December 31st, 2021, the Section 115 pension trust had a balance of 18.8 million dollars. The increase of 4.8 million was due to investment gains. In addition, with general fund revenues and expenditures increasing in recent years, staff is recommending an increase to the economic uncertainty reserve from 19 million to 24 million. This reserve should be at a level of two months operating expenditures plus 1.5 months of revenues, as detailed in the staff report. This action would move 5 million dollars from general fund unassigned fund balance to committed fund balance. And this 24 million dollars may only be used at city council discretion and in accordance with the policy. And finally, the last adjustment to fund balance is establishment, or proposed establishment of a capital reserve within the general fund. This would move 10 million dollars from unassigned fund balance to committed fund balance. It would be used to assist with capital program, short and long-term planning, and used to fund future capital projects. These dollars may only be used at the discretion and authorization of city council. These dollars would need to be uncommitted and then transferred to the capital projects fund and then appropriated for a project. On this slide, we have a look at the general fund fund balance estimates. On the far-right column, we have where we anticipate ending at the end of this fiscal year. It should be noted that these totals include the proposed changes we discussed today. Lastly, it's important to note that the general fund will retain approximately 37 million in unassigned fund balance. During the proposed study session in May 2022, staff will be providing a detailed look at the 10-year forecast and will explain how that 37 million is proposed to be used in the future. On this next slide, we have our staffing. So CIP is requesting one of its limited-term project managers be converted to a permanent position. With this position's involvement in many long-term projects, losing this position would be disruptive and financially ineffective to the progress of these projects. On this slide, we have our recommended actions. First of all, we would recommend that council consider accepting the city manager's mid-year financial report, as well as adopting a resolution to increase appropriations by 9.5 million and increase revenues by 10.2 million. And finally, consider the approval of converting one limited-term project manager to a full-time position. On this slide, we have the consideration of amendments to the city's committed unassigned fund balance and use of one-time funds policy, and the changes are outlined on this slide. In terms of next steps, we have our third quarter report to council and our proposed budget study session scheduled for May 17, 2022. And finally, as always, and as a matter of transparency and engagement, we created an interactive digital financial report on OpenGov. OpenGov is the city's financial transparency portal. By going to this web address, cupertino.org/budget, or scanning this QR code, you'll be taken to the report, and you will be able to drill into more of the details that have been included in the attachments to this item. In addition, the city has also posted budget videos on Facebook and Instagram and our budget website. And these social media videos include the city manager and a brief overview of our mid-year budget. We look forward to hearing your questions and comments. Thank you.
Okay, very well done and timely. Thank you very much. And let's go ahead and move to our members of the public before we go to questions from council as well as comments. Our first hand is raised from Jean Bedord. I will remind our members of the public that you'll have three minutes to speak, and you'll need to have your hand raised by the time the first public commenter concludes speaking. Right now, the only hands are from Jean Bedord and Govind, and so welcome, Jean.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and council members. My name is Jean Bedord, and I am a longtime Cupertino resident. I'd like to commend Christina and the staff for an excellent financial report and the ongoing commitment to responsible financial reporting for the city. What I'm questioning tonight is an expenditure on page 16 of this report under the City Manager Discretionary Fund for 2,400 dollars. In checking the payables register, this line item references a housing op-ed piece. Now, the only op-ed piece that I'm aware of is a letter to the editor by Mayor Darcy Paul in the Mercury News on December 9th, 2021. My first question is the charge itself. I've never had to pay for a newspaper op-ed. In particular, the Mercury News has never charged me or the other residents I know for their letters to the editor. The second question is the charge to the City Manager Discretionary Fund. Cupertino had an interim city manager during this time period. As far as I know, he didn't do an op-ed. Now, if this op-ed piece was by Mayor Paul, shouldn't it be charged to the mayor's fund, which has available money? My concern is that the City Manager Discretionary Fund is only 75,000 dollars, which is quite inadequate for a city with an adopted budget of 148 million. So who is spending this miniscule budget since it's not the city manager? Please investigate and transfer to the appropriate budget. Thank you for your diligence in ensuring fiscal responsibility.
Thank you, Jean. Our next speaker, so Govind doesn't have his hand raised anymore. We have a Jen, and so welcome, Jen.
Hi, Mayor Darcy. Thank you for this very good presentation. Thanks to the staff. I think we need to make sure we're not nitpicking the budget more than we really need to. I'm, I think it's very important that the city have engagement with the local newspapers. We need to have a robust discussion about our place in California, our place in the county. And I just think that, looking outward, we need to have communications with the Mercury. I mean, I don't know what happened to the Cupertino Courier. We used to use it a lot, like in the last 20 years, for communications, but it seems to have gone away. And I think it's important that we look at our ability to speak out on issues that might be of importance to the residents of Cupertino, and that means engaging with the Mercury regardless of what the Mercury's hostility might be toward the city. Also, there are other newspapers around. There's Patch. I think it's really, really important that the public have a way of reading about what's going on in the city. And I just see because the Cupertino Courier is gone, we just have no way of speaking out anymore. A lot of us are not on Nextdoor for some certain issues that happened with Nextdoor. A lot of people aren't using social media for fear of issues with social media. And I just think that it's important that the city have the ability to engage with, I'm going to call the newspaper an old-fashioned social media, but I just was hoping that the Cupertino Courier could come back someday because it's, it's gone. We have no access to it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jennifer. So let's go back to council at this point. Let me go ahead and address the first comment here, and I think that it was a studied bit of sleuthing, incomplete, however. That 2,400 dollars did not go to my op-ed, or not op-ed, I should say, letter to the editor. I generated that letter to the editor all on my own volition. No one got paid for it. No one certainly got paid in order to publish the letter to the editor. I can't say that for the City Managers Discretionary Fund, though that's entirely the city manager's discretion. And so I can also say that nothing was published as a result of that expenditure, but it had nothing to do whatsoever with my letter to the editor, which I wrote all by my very self. So let me go to any other members of city council that have questions or comments. Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised.
Thank you. And we go until 6:45, is that correct, Mayor Paul?
That's correct. On this item, we go for another 18 minutes, and then we'll start with item number 12.
Okay. Thank you. I do notice that under the Office of Communications, there, there are a couple of items where that could have been, that what you discussed, the 2,400, could have been billed under, which would be contract services or with almost 40,000 dollars or contingencies of 6740. And the mayor has, the manager has contingencies of 3,773 dollars, but I think that would be important for the public to know that, what the policies are or are not regarding money which is in the general fund and the movement of that. So for instance, some cities have a dollar cap. You need to go to, if you're going to raise the appropriations, you need to come to the city council and have it approved beforehand. It could be something like 10,000 dollars. And then there's also some procurement and contracting caps as well. And perhaps this would be a good time to have that explained, so when people are looking at our budget, that there can be a great deal of movement. And I would like to have that first explained for general fund money, and I think perhaps Director Alfaro could answer that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for the question. So just to, maybe, if I may, just to address a little bit about the process related to the City Managers Discretionary Fund. When an item comes up that could fit into another budget, say communications, for example, we work with the department, with the division staff to find out if there is any, any room to be able to pay for this item based on things that they're expecting before the end of the year. If it doesn't look like there may be space there, it seems a little tight, the next place we're going to go ask is, hey, city manager, we've looked, we think this is where it would make the most sense, but we're not seeing the availability of funds there. Would you be willing to use your discretionary fund? And then the city manager either tells us yes or no, and if the answer is no, we need to figure out a different course of action. Did you want me to stop? Did you want me to stop?
I, I think that part's, that's adequate. The, I'm not really sure what we're showing for policy for, with regards to the discretionary spending. I believe it was essentially that the manager gets to decide on that. And, and previously in the November sixteenth update that we were given, there was some mention that it, that the discretionary fund could be used for the supply of feminine products in the bathrooms in Cupertino. So I, I would, I'm not seeing that that came out of the discretionary fund or, or if it, if that happened.
The expenditure has taken place. It took place, I believe, in late January, early February. So when we come back and report in May on third quarter, we'll be reporting out on that expenditure. But it is, it has occurred and it's just because when we look at mid year, we're just reporting on the first six months and this expense happened after.
Okay, and then, okay, thank you.
And then let me wrap up the, the transfer question, if that's okay? Perfect. So on page ninety one of the city's adopted budget document, near the very bottom in a section titled Budget Amendment Process. It outlines the city's budget amendment process, which is similar to most cities, I think with the exception of two in Santa Clara County. In that any movement within a specific fund, so say the general fund, that that can be done with department head and city manager approval. Department heads will generally make any movements between any of their budget units or any of, within a budget unit, any of their expense categories. And that's done via Budget Journal that goes up to my staff for review and then for my final approval. So we understand what's happening with this movement. They have to stay within budget. So they can't move more than they have overall. The second instance in transfers may be if something is moving between departments. We're going to bring the city manager, both departments are involved and the city manager. So everybody's aware of how these funds are moving around. City manager also is informed of transfers that happen within the department as well. So he's aware that those changes are happening. Any change in budget that requires an increase to appropriations or to the overall budget must be brought to city council for approval. And we have historically had this set up this way as a way for the city manager to operationally control what's happening in the city. The budget process starts in November when we start building the budgets. So by the time we're in May and June in adoption, I always tell people this big budget book is great. It's full of information, but it is dated the day that it's printed. Things have already happened to change since the document is printed. So it's kind of really a point in time document, and we try to update as part of the quarterly reports what has changed. This year specifically, we started adding as one of the attachments, the transfers that have occurred. To have more transparency on what is moving around in the budget.
Okay, okay, thank you. And it would be, to Mayor Paul, it would be my preference that that this update would first go to the audit committee, which has, you know, three finance background individuals on it. Before it comes to council, so a lot of the, the questions that their expertise could address that they would be able to have a chance to look at, look at this budget and, and make their comments because they have that expertise. So I think for me, moving forward, because I see that there's a time constraint on this particular item now. But moving forward, I would like to see these, the quarterly updates and the mid year, et cetera. Go to audit first and have all the questions answered before it comes to council. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore, I, I think that suggestion is duly noted by both myself, your fellow council members. And then in addition to that, as well as staff. So I think that is a good idea, especially given the time constraints we often run into in the city council. But also, as you point out, the expertise represented by our audit committee. So let's go, Jim, you have your hand up. Did you want to say something before I go to Councilmember Willie?
Oh, I can come back another time. That's fine. Well, I was just going to say that by going to the audit committee, it does push any of the reporting out farther. So it's even a longer time to get it to the council. And especially when we come time for the budget, this report would be even later. So it's going to make it very difficult for us to do the budget on time.
Right. So it, it seems like the schedule would have to be examined to make sure that a timely flow, process flow could be preserved there. And Christine, I see your hand is raised as well. Did you have a comment before I go on to Councilmember Willie? Briefly, please, given our time constraints. And you're still muted, Christine.
I just wanted to point out that under the current duties and responsibilities of council, of audit committee, sorry. They have to review budget format, which I don't believe review of quarterly budget reports is there. So that's something we would need to update for audit to be able to see those.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. And I, I'm not sure if the statute itself is explicitly prohibitive of that particular activity. I think it would be good to refer that question to the city attorney. But in the interest of time, let's go to Councilmember Willie, followed by Vice Mayor Chow. Councilmember Willie.
Okay, great. A very good presentation, Christina and Thomas. I mean, twenty six slides in under twenty minutes. Great. I'll go to slide number twenty one that was staffing. Reclassify a limited term project manager to a full term position. I'm thinking that must be works or planning.
That's in our capital improvement program group.
Great. And so with that being said, great. You know, we've heard from city managers that we're really pretty lean with staff. So I support, you know, trying to make sure our, our staff are happy with their positions. Limited term versus full term. I think that says a lot when we're trying to retain staff. So I would support moving that one over to a full term. I'd go so far as to say, you know, with our new city manager, that when the budget comes to us in May, that hopefully by then he's been able to look at his staffing needs based on his expertise and how he's going to run the city. And, and let us know what he feels he'd like to, to see in terms of maybe some additional staff or movement around. Because I'd really like to do whatever we can to have the, the solid staff that we need. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Willie, and let us go to Vice Mayor Chow.
Hi. I support Councilmember Moore's proposal that the audit can review the quarterly update first. Palo Alto has a finance subcommittee and then they do review this kind of update. So maybe there's something we can work out. And I have other questions, maybe I'll ask later. It's already six thirty eight. And I, so I understand we already have a CIP reserve. And now we are adding a CIP committed reserve. What exactly is the difference?
It's really, I'm sorry, is it okay if I answer the question, Mayor Paul?
Go ahead, please.
It's really, it's a reserve and it's in, we have the capital reserve which lives in the capital fund. And then we have this new committed reserve in the general fund. And it's really a way to just allocate should projects go over, should new projects come about after the CIP has been to council and been adopted. This fund just provides another funding source, again, that we would need to get approval from council if they wanted to use these funds. So it just provides just one more level of funding that we can separate aside from our unassigned. And moving it out of the unassigned really just helps us look forward operationally and not account for those dollars in that fund.
Okay. Then for the American Rescue Plan Act. Why do we have climate action plan there? Is that part of the rescue plan for pandemic?
Give me one second. Let me look at that slide. That should have been, I believe it was one of the work program items, the climate action plan. I'm just looking to see if it's listed that way. If not, I can double check and get that to you.
Maybe I need some detail later, just what's the parameter of American Rescue Act? Yeah, I can. It's okay.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Let's go to Councilmember Wei. And hung your muted, so if you want to speak, you'll be.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Okay, I just want to thank the finance department for a thorough report. And I know a lot are transferring in and out, and these are very complicated reports, and it's very clear. So thanks very much. I also want to mention that we are finance manager Zach Korsch designed, but I think he also contributed to this. I just want to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Wei. And, you know, I, I do know that Zach did find a directorship in another jurisdiction. So that's, you know, good to see that, that advancement there. Well deserved. So let's go, I see Vice Mayor Chow, you still have your hand up. As does Councilmember Moore. I will go ahead and, and we can, for the sake of, you know, discussion, continue this. But I do want to put the motion on the table under the recommended action or sets of action, I should say, that are delineated in our, in our agenda. And so in the interest of time, I'll just go ahead and move those recommended actions as described by one through four under the recommended action of this item one in our agenda. Well, can someone second this for me for the purpose of moving our discussion forward? Councilmember Willie, I see your hand is raised.
Yes, second it.
Okay, thanks very much. And so is there care for a further discussion at this time? I see Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Moore.
Yes, I just have a couple of questions, or I'll just make a statement. I personally don't agree with the way we're spending the, the COVID money. And, and you know, I understand that that was, it was apparently a choice, but that's, I, I, I don't agree with it. I think it should be more specifically going towards COVID related expenses rather than covering some of the other costs. So I take an issue with that. I was a little surprised at the twenty seven thousand dollars for fifty five leaf blowers. I thought that that seemed a little bit high. Want to mention that. And I am curious about the, the number of vacancies which we might have now. This was reported in the November report, the average number of vacancies we were told was twenty two point three. In fiscal year twenty nineteen, it was ten point eight. In twenty twenty, fourteen point eight, twenty twenty one, twenty two point three. So I'm wondering what, what we're looking at right now. And, and I know there was a, a couple of paragraphs talking about the great resignation and, and that a lot of cities have been experiencing this. But would, would anyone on staff happen to know what our number of vacancies are currently?
And we have a hand raised from, from Jim. Jim, I probably.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Moore. Yes, I just was updated. We're at eighteen vacancies. I believe it's this week.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much, Jim. And I think that with that, I, I know that we all have comments and perspectives on the budget. But I think that at the same time, the comments are duly noted going forward. I think they, we make some really good process points. At the end of the day, of course, the budget controls a lot of aspects of our city. But I, I think for the most part, it's fair to say that we're a fairly fiscally conservative, you know, community. And that's, you know, fairly well reflected in the, the treatment of the expenditures and the revenues that we have. So I'm going to go ahead and, you know, just conclude this by saying that I think it is an ongoing process in terms of the reflections of our community priorities and, you know, just basic positioning. And I will point out that our council has been very encouraging of this two million dollars every year. That essentially goes to helping make sure that our employee retirement accounts are funded well. And so, you know, over the course of years, I've often pointed out in various parts of the budget that it's important not to necessarily lead with a certain amount that supposedly goes to council and our commissions. Because of course, it is a much larger amount that goes to our employee pool. So that's something that I pointed out about six years ago, and I think you can look at these things incrementally over time. But, you know, there, there are lots of things that are reflected in the budget. And it reflects a, a lot of considerable amount of work by people. So I, I'm certainly appreciative of that, and I know my fellow council members are. But of course, just like any other living document, especially one that's reflective of so many activities in our city or any jurisdiction. There is, you know, like I stated in my state of the city, always room for improvement everywhere. So. With that, I don't see any other further hands raised. And so Madam City Clerk, Vice Mayor Chow, you do have your hand raised.
All right, one, I know. Next time when it comes back, can we also compare with the pre pandemic numbers? It's great to see that we compare with previous year, but I'm very curious how we compare with before, from the two thousand nineteen.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point, Vice Mayor Chow. Thank you very much. So the TOT, for instance, it would be interesting to see how calendar twenty nineteen looked compared to calendar twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. But, or whatever full fiscal year numbers that we have that could compare pre pandemic numbers. And with that, I see Councilmember Moore with a hand raised. And so Councilmember Moore, did you want to try to get in last word without trying to elicit a further last word?
Sure. I'm just, when I do the calculation for the CIP and follow the methodology from the budget. I get four point six million as the three year average, and we're looking at the ten million CIP. So if, if we're going to, if we're going to, in, in my opinion, kind of rush to, to a vote without really thoroughly going over these items, then I, I'm, I'll have to vote against it. But I'll just letting you know that.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for clarifying that, Councilmember Moore. And it was procedurally absolutely correct for pointing out that, that out prior to the vote itself. And so duly noted on, on, on that and all of our points. Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call vote for the motion on the table?
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Wei?
Hi.
Councilmember Willie?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Hi.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries with more voting now.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. We'll go on to item number two on our six o'clock special meeting agenda. This is a continuation of what was originally item twelve on our March first, two thousand twenty two agenda. We did start on this. This is a progress update of the House of Representatives update. And so we, we started, we received the presentation, we took in public comment. And we were in the midst of bringing it back to council with further questions and commentary. But what I will say, because I did get a, an inquiry from a member of the public. There does seem to be an appetite to provide further input based upon perhaps some of the developments that they see within some of the materials that have been provided. I think that's a fair point. I, I do ask people to be cognizant of the fact that we do have time limitations here. I'm trying to keep it within the allocated time and starting our next meeting on time as well. So what I will ask the video department to do is to set at, at one minute for the comments. And so at least the members of the public will be able to put that input in there. And so why don't we start this with an updated, there's no need to re-present, of course. But if there are updates, Mr. City Manager from either staff or outside consultant based upon how we discussed since our March first meeting. Please feel free to provide those updated points or presentation points. And then we'll go ahead and as our, you know, normal process goes, I'll open it up to the public for comments. But again, relegated to the one minute, and I, I won't necessarily say you need to keep your comments just to the news stuff. But I will note that it is, you know, a curtailed amount of time to speak. So Mr. City Manager, would you like to make those introductions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to introduce our Community Development Director, Ben Fu. He'll be taking over this part.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager and Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers Ben Fu, George Community Development. Thank you for the introduction, for the item, Mr. Mayor and Mr. City Manager. Join me tonight are consultant representatives Andy Flower as well as David Masterson. We also have a couple of city staff from the Plane Division within your community development departments. Luke Connolly, Senior Planner, as well as Pugh Gosh, Planning Manager. Tonight, I intend to have Andy provide an updated presentation. In the presentation, we'll discuss options for the stakeholders group and some parameters for a potential strategic advisory committee, subcommittee. uh, committee, subcommittee. Uh, we'll also go over a little bit on the affirmative further action from a affirmatively further fair housing uh, laws. So with that, Andy, I will hand off the presentation to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Foo. Mayor Paul, if I may share my screen?
Oh, yes, of course. Please feel free.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, Council and Mayor.
Great to have you back.
Thank you. Uh, so tonight, I'll I'll be brief with our presentation. As I understand, we're uh, short on time. We'll just cover a little bit more about the stakeholder group and uh, the new idea that came up at our last meeting, the um, strategy advisory subcommittee, uh, project timeline, and we'll be asking for council feedback on this. So with the stakeholder group recommendations, we've outlined some of the guidance from uh, HCD for a stakeholder group um, in affirmatively furthering fair housing. These are the types of uh, participants that we would like to see in a stakeholder group. And um, and we find that uh, many of our recommended participants fit this uh, these categories. I'll just read through them quickly. Nonprofit and community-based organizations, housing providers, lower-income and special needs community members and households, including representative organizations, churches and community groups serving ethnic or linguistic minorities, and local and regional advocates and service providers such as homeless service agencies. So we present to you this evening, three different options for potentially moving forward with a a stakeholder group as part of our housing element update process. Option A would be to reconsider accepting the staff recommended list of stakeholders. Option B would be for uh, council to add up to 10 additional stakeholder candidates to the recommended list. And option C, as was provided with the um, agenda packet, there um, was information for each of the candidates, each of the applicants, I should say, so that you could select your uh, top 10 candidates. We kept the names off of the list. You could do a blind assessment similar to what our um, what our staff did. So just to remind you, excuse me, and to update um, the list that was included in your staff report, we have John Zao, Abdullah Maman, Jennifer Sharon, Joseph Frun, Sean Hughes, Janet Van Zoren, Eva Pachi Chow, Elizabeth Moore, Lisa Warren, Kylie Clark, Erin Kleinfeldter, David Fung, Susan Moore, and Ravi Kumar. So half of these candidates have a lived experience aligned with HCD guidance and half of the candidates have experience as representative of those with housing need, which as we just reviewed that list is also in line with HCD guidance. Our milestone schedule, as we've shared with you in the past, um, has us beginning with the site options and we're moving through that process right now with the planning commission. Uh, and our next will be comprehension of our our SEQA um, by sharing that list of sites that we'll be moving forward with. At that point, we'll have a draft housing element that we hope to bring to um, council as quickly as possible so that it could be reviewed by HCD with their 90-day review time. We'll also at that point be doing updates with the safety element, compiling information and studies that we need for our SEQA draft and preparing for public hearings for HCD submittal. We've learned quite a bit through uh, what Southern California is doing. Um, we understand now that HCD not only takes that full 90 days, um, but as of this last September, there's also a 30-day public review period that's mandatory. We were hoping to do a similar thing even before that law came into pass. Um, HCD is also letting us know that that it's best for us to anticipate and expect a second, maybe even third 60-day review period. Uh, so in in thinking about how that then factors in with our schedule as we move forward with this, we we have um, a few different alternatives. This is the kind of um, exercise that we would be bringing forward to our uh, strategy um, advisory subcommittee. And um, and that subcommittee would be composed of um, a- as we would recommend it, the Chair of the Housing Commission, the Chair of the Planning Commission, and two council members. So tonight's discussion of of schedule is um, informative uh, only and um, but we want to make sure that you understand where we're at with things. So our our alternative one would be to keep the current timeline um, to work briskly towards uh, submitting a draft on time. What we've learned from the Southern California cities is that isn't the most important thing. And uh, um, it really well may serve Cupertino better to focus more diligently on AFFH and adapt the timeline specifically because the 70% of the Southern California jurisdictions have not received certification from HCD, mostly due to um, incongruence with AFFH requirements. And um, also the four-year cycle update consequence for a late uh, submittal to HCD has been revoked. Now, the main consequence for being late with a uh, certification request or submittal to HCD is that the required timeline for rezoning instead of three years is a one-year period plan. So we want to encourage the public um, moving forward, different ways to participate with our engagecucutino.org site. We will be segueing to a a site that we will have um, even more robust uh, information and exchange of um, um, announcements and things like that. So council feedback, tonight, we're asking council to select an option for moving forward with stakeholder group and whether or not you would like to appoint a strategy advisory subcommittee. And that concludes my presentation. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Andy. And so, uh, as promised, uh, let me check in with staff. Does staff want to follow up on any of the points that were raised last time? Um, I don't see any hands, but I'll go by hands if anyone wants to give us some updates and follow-ups. Uh, again, I don't see the hands. So let me go to our members of the public. Right now, we have Sujatha Venkateshaman, we have uh, Jenny Griffin, Lisa Warren, Tessa Parish, and Govind Munimad Patla. And I'll remind our members of the public, uh, you have a minute to speak, Peggy Griffin as well. And so, Sujatha, welcome.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Paul and the council member. My name is Sujatha Venkateshaman and I'm the Associate Executive Director at West Valley Community Services. I want to take a moment to thank your hard work of on the housing element and the time and effort you are putting for making this process effective and inclusive. Uh, we strongly encourage you to move forward with the recommendation from staff, looking at option A and B for the stakeholder group. Uh, while nothing is uh, perfectly represented in the community, but we value um, inclusive um, community and a process. Um, there are discussion of having these members participate in a public meeting um, the same way as other community members, but I don't think that will be sufficient because of the time. Uh, we provide three minutes in public comment. In stakeholder meetings, community members can have long input time and have discussion. So we strongly encourage you to look at option um, A and B. Thank you.
Thank you, Sujatha. And next we have Jennifer Griffin or Jenny Griffin. Welcome, Jenny.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Darcy. Um, hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin. Um, and I appreciate Andy uh, making very good updates to this, uh, and our staff working very hard. Um, I just, I sent an email to all the uh, planning commissioners and city council today that I don't think we need a stakeholder group. Uh, we've done, Cupertino's never used one of these before. I have participated in three to four previous housing elements. We did them. We went site by site. I think the public deserves to be involved in this and I don't, I don't want the stakeholder group. I I don't think it's a good plan. Um, the public is living this drama from HCD and we have the time and effort to go through it. And I I want every site to be looked at by the public. Also, can you explain what a strategic housing um, sub, something or other is, subcommittee? And I'm sorry, that's the wrong thing. What, there was something that I didn't understand. It-
Thank you, Jenny. Um, we have the same list as before. I'll read it off again. It is Lisa Warren, Tessa Parish, Govind, Munimad Patla, and Peggy Griffin. Next we have Lisa, welcome Lisa.
Thank you. So first, I want to say that I agree with most, if not all, of the comments from council, um, the comments and concerns from council in the March 1st meeting. So I hope you've all remembered what you've said and and continue to ask for things that aren't addressed here. Um, yes, to an advisory committee beyond the stakeholder group. And again, the stakeholder group, in my opinion, needs to be in-person meeting. So much more gets done and gets, there's more back and forth. Not, if you're in a Zoom, you're still going to have limited time and you can't respond organically. And that's a bad idea for a committee like this. Really bad. Um, and I remember staff in the last cycle having a room full of people at Quinlan Center do it, trying to do the mapping exercise in real life in groups and talking about, well, what does this mean if you put this here? It's just way better to do it in person. I'm really set up with-
Lisa, our next speaker is Tessa Parish. Welcome, Tessa.
Okay, hi there. I'm sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, I I just wanted to share the sentiments, um, at least I just shared, in person would be a lot better. Um, and about the stakeholders, I have mixed feelings about that. And I just wanted to share that I I too have my reservations about somebody, a particular person being represented at where the community is involved. And if they are, whoever it is, wants to be involved, I think could be and should be involved. Um, that's all. No other comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tessa. Our next speaker is Govind. Welcome, Govind.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, so I I agree with the idea that we should have in-person meeting. Uh, I I would prefer public engagement instead of having a stakeholder group, but if we have to go with the stakeholder group, I would recommend having an advisory committee. And I will uh, prefer to have option B. Uh, I like, I would like to recommend option B uh, for for the main reason that uh, I think a lot of other people have not got represented. But even if we have a stakeholder group meeting, uh, public participation should be allowed. That's my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Govind. Our next speaker is Munimad Patla. Welcome, Muny.
Uh, greeting Mayor. Uh, my name is Munimad Patla. Um, I'm a planning commission member, but I'm speaking here as a resident of Cupertino. Um, I haven't seen option A and B, so I can't comment on it. I joined late. My apologies. Um, I do believe, you know, we need to improve our engagement with the public, you know, on this topic, given the amount of housing that we need to build. And we don't want any last minute uprising from the community in terms of, you know, this is not right. And, you know, we want to do referendums, this, that, and all, right? So we have seen enough of drama last six years in our city. So we better engage our public, you know, upfront. So to that end, you know, I recommend that, you know, we put out some big banners on major intersections as to, you know, what we are embarking on, why we need them to engage in this process. I don't think, you know, just sending emails or, you know, postcards is sufficient. We need, you know, all of the community with a big banner somewhere in the junction. Thank you.
Thank you, Muny. Our next and last speaker is Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, Council, um, EMC Group and staff. Uh, thank you for the presentation. I agree that uh, in-person is best. Um, an advisory committee for helping, we know the city and can figure out the best way to get the the things across and how to approach it, to guide the consultant maybe, uh, and have more interaction. Um, my concern with the the group is that one person does not represent all BMR people or all churches or all anything. And to elect them as a spokesperson is scary, especially without transparency. Um, I uh, still, you have not addressed the lack of emails that aren't going out. I keep mentioning it every time and we still don't have any. Why? And setting up a new e- uh, website is like a moving target. Fix the problem, please. Um.
Thank you very much. Uh, and that uh, concludes our public comment on this item two for special meeting. Let's bring it back to council and uh, with follow-ups to uh, various of the points raised by our consultant as well as uh, members of the public. I do see a couple of hands raised from our council, Vice Mayor Chow, followed by Councilmember Way, followed by Councilmember Moore now. And so, Vice Mayor Chow, uh, let me do a quick time check. We're just under 40 minutes. So, uh, let's go ahead and allocate uh, five minutes for each of us, uh, if you choose to use it. Um, but um, let's go ahead. I I'll be relatively quick about it. Once we go through this round, I'll ask for a motion. Um, and then hopefully we'll be able to hash out uh, where the decisional points end up being. So Vice Mayor Chow, take this off.
Yeah, I think we need to have an outreach plan. I see that Staratoga has a very comprehensive plan outlining every channel we can use for outreach and when. So I I'd like to see that plan to be presented to the planning commission for review. And second, I review the HCD guidance on the affirmatively fair housing. The current structure of the stakeholder goes against the guidance. The guidance wants us to reach out to people who normally would not be engaged in this process. And so we can engage them. But the current process asks a commitment of eight to 10 hours per meeting. And then that means we are not reaching out to the specific people we need to outreach to. And also, the uh, the affirmatively fair housing guidance, usually a city has multiple ways to outreach to the different diverse people, not just one way. I would like to see a plan of all the different ways we are reaching out to different people. And I haven't got answered uh, uh, my question, for example, which city specifically use this type of stakeholder group with such a long time commitment? And among the cities with certified housing element, which of them use this type of stakeholder group and what other things they do in addition to this group? Um, because I don't see that any city with certified plan use this group. Then I don't know how we can see and say that helps. And like uh, Peggy said and I pointed out last night, one person uh, identifying with a group doesn't represent that group. We need multiple people from our group to represent them. And so far, I have not gotten a background list from the group that's selected, except half of them is this, half of them is that. So I really don't know this group. Who do they represent? I have no idea um, to even decide that, except that it appears it does not follow the HCD guidance. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Chow. Next we have Councilmember Way, followed by Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So I think um, according to the public comment and um, council's concerns, there are two things that maybe uh, need clarification. Uh, one particularly important is even if we have this group or another advisory group, public engagement is still going on and we still get a lot of people to engage or everyone to engage. That's my first question. And I believe that is a very important point to make and to make it happen. The second is about transparency. Um, these groups, when they meet, are they recorded, are they open to public listening, or how how is the format for either group or if we have a second group to meet? The third comment is about one person doesn't recommend a group, a recognized group. Sure, one person does not recommend church, does not become uh, represent a homeless or renters, but we need that one person voice in a advisory group or a, or any group that we can only people. But doesn't mean, I guess, go back to my first point, doesn't mean any other public who belong to churches or um, you know, renters don't have a voice. So I really would like that these two um, points clarified and verified so that it's uh, there, so that council and the public are comfortable with it. And as for uh, affirmatively, affirmatively for further fair housing, I do believe that our consultant maybe, maybe there was no, I I I think I, I want to trust the consultant that they are doing maybe there was no, I think I want to trust the consultant that they are doing everything to make sure our housing element will pass HCD's guidelines. Maybe they're doing extra to do that. So maybe Andy can explain that point too. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Way. Next we have council member Moore. Or actually, do we want to go and check in with Andy? Okay, so I see council member Moore nodding her head. Did you want to follow up with regard to council member Way's request for anything that Vice Mayor Chow stated? Andy, at this time.
Absolutely. I want to galvanize that point that whether or not we have this group, or either of these groups, or both of them, that we're going to make sure that there's all kinds of ways for everyone to participate. We want to make sure that the doors are open, both online and as is allowed, having opportunities in-person as well. And there was another question about transparency. The intention for the stakeholders' meeting is that it would be recorded and available immediately soon after, and available on the website, and notification would go out via email for all those subscribed, that that is then available. As far as whether or not this would meet HCD's AFFH, it's one piece of the puzzle, but it's an important piece of the puzzle. And the idea would be to have the strategy advisory group to meet prior to these meetings so that that group would also understand how this fits into the bigger strategy. This is an unprecedented time. This is different than any other housing element that's come before it. There has been a paradigm shift, and what is being required right now by HCD is brand new. And as indicated by the video that I shared as a link within the staff report, I strongly encourage anyone who's wondering, what is it that HCD is requiring for this six-cycle housing element specifically for areas that are of highest resource, which is even newer to HCD than what they've been reviewing for in Southern California? What we're hearing loud and clear is that communities like Cupertino, we need to go the extra mile, we need to try new things. It's much better that we get caught trying new things and attempting to reach out and incorporate as many voices as possible. The idea even with this group, just one last point, is that it wouldn't be exclusive to this group, but we would also have panels come in. So, and anyone can recommend who might be a part of those panels throughout the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Let's go to council member Moore at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Paul. And thank you, Andy. Looking at the CEQA process, I'm hoping, or I think the initial study should go to the Environmental Review Committee with the Appendix G checklist. And that could really serve as an initial hearing point to get some of the potential pitfalls and issues out in the open and spoken about. So I'm hoping that gets to the ERC per our duties and responsibilities. I personally like the idea of the advisory group. I think that could provide some individuals who have the time and interest to really dig into some of these, kind of the rules of this process. I think that could really help. I do want to point out that West Valley Community Services have had bi-weekly meetings since September with our consultants. So I'm going to assume that would be Andy. And I just want to make that known, that that has already been covered very well. And I'm going to assume that you are going to continue to do that outreach and have those meetings. Earlier today, I was looking at one of our local churches, which seems to have quite a bit of representation on the stakeholders' group. And I do want to mention that because I was looking at a housing forum that was held at the church. And I'm seeing that the Reverend is on our list, that one of the leaders of that church is also on the stakeholder list, that the person, one of the two people who gave the presentation is a stakeholder on the list. So it was a housing forum, they're giving a presentation to the parishioners there. And we also had one of our housing commissioners there, and another member of the public. So I feel that that particular faith-based group has received a great deal of interaction and coverage. And when I think about this, the city and our faith-based groups, we also have other denominations, Lutherans and Presbyterians and Latter-day Saints and so forth. So I think we need to really reach out to other faith-based groups and not have so much of what almost looks like an echo chamber, when you have so many that are showing up on our stakeholders' group that have already connected and received and shared their own messaging. So I want to see that we are reaching out further across the city as well, and geographically, as well as, you know, looking at different groups. I think that that could help. So I'm a little concerned that there's been so much intermingling of the stakeholder members already, that they've already connected. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, council member Moore. And next we have council member Willie.
Great. Thank you, Andy, for an update. Appreciate that. And somewhat of a little bit of a refresher, which I think helps. I also quote Vice Mayor's comment that we really need to see the engagement plan in order for us to then make these discrete decisions, to feel that the plan does encompass, you know, the full community, as opposed to we start moving down this process and we find that the community as a whole is not necessarily being fully covered well. You know, in statistics, which is what we're truly after, we want input from the community. And statistics, a normal distribution, you have to have random selection. You can't say, we're only going to select items from this one area, and then say, well, that must represent everything. So I think we need to plan first. And then I would be in favor of having multiple groups that represent, hopefully, all the different demographics, you know? And by all means, we've got, would have a group of seniors, we would have a group of renters, we would have a group of regular homeownerships, we'd have a group of families with children. And then, you know, with the balance of the groups that would be needed to reflect the whole community, then I think we could say, wow, we're going to get the input that we need so that when we make those decisions and present it, we feel it represents the community. So that's my comment. It's a big job. Thank you for stepping up, Andy.
Thank you very much, council member Willie. And let me go ahead and start my clock here. So Andy, if we approve the stakeholders' group, what's the timetable for meeting? And when would these meetings take place?
Meetings would be front-loaded, meaning we really need to understand the housing need as early as possible in this process, because the policies and programs need to then dovetail with that understood need. So there would be, my guess would be, my intention would be that there would be three meetings here in spring and into summer. And then following HCD review, so three months following that, we would then want to connect with the strategy group if we were to go forward with that, and then also with our stakeholder group as many times as necessary. My guess would be probably also three times there. So there would be several meetings here in spring and then in fall. That's the goal.
So why would the fall meetings be something that's automatic? I mean, could they be contingent upon whether we hear back from HCD? I mean, if it's a successful process, could we make the decision after these initial meetings? Is that possible?
Absolutely, Mayor Paul, yes. I appreciate the optimism. Yes, absolutely.
Great. So there have been a number of members of the public that have expressed an interest in having live meetings. Is that something that could be delivered? Or is that more of a logistical question that we should be posing to our staff?
It would be a combination. It would mostly be logistical, because we would want to record them so that others can view the meetings as well.
Okay. And could we get a commitment to make these meetings accessible to members of the public as they are happening? And so even if we can't get them live, can we get a commitment to be able to use a variation of technology? For the Zoom platform, for instance, it would be, I believe, a seminar so that people could at least listen in and get a sense that they have a real-time understanding of what's being discussed?
I appreciate the question. However, in working together with my team, and they may like to speak up as well, our experience and best practice when we're trying to be as open as possible to a group who, some of whom have not participated in this kind of way before, it could actually undermine or taint the experience and therefore the outcome that we could have from those meetings. So our preference would be for them to be recorded and within a two-day period, have it be posted on the website with an email going out for all those who are subscribed to the, both the city site and the renewed website.
I see. And so if that's a sticking point for a lot of our community with a sense that, you know, if we don't really have an understanding of what's going on in real time, that it's somehow less transparent, is that something that could be communicated? Because, you know, I see your list, I think there are a relatively, you know, savvy and committed group of people represented there. I mean, especially if there's no interaction occurring. I wonder what the drawback would be to allowing people to listen in on what's happening in the course of time. And I will preface this, you know, your subsequent comments by saying that, for me, it actually would be a sticking point, frankly. I mean, I think I would be disinclined to support a process that doesn't allow the public to actually hear what's going on as it's going on.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your feedback. If I may, I do have a point that I would like to clarify with the city attorney. I'm wondering how we got to this point of requesting approval. Because I, what I recall is that there was, there was an intention to have the stakeholder meeting groups along with our outreach plan that we shared with staff. And the idea was to bring it to council, but I didn't know that we were bringing forward the idea of whether or not the stakeholder groups could move forward and be a part of our community engagement plan or not. So I would like to have that point of word clarified.
Well, I'm just reading the agenda here, and the final point is, and consider approval of the stakeholders' group. And so it does seem to me that it is not just adequately, but explicitly noticed for that particular consideration. So.
Just to clarify, I think it's the list. So I just want to clarify that I think it's the list of names, and it's not about whether or not a stakeholder group would be part of our process. Because I think, I just want to be clear about what our focus is this evening.
Okay, understood. Well, with the feedback with regard to our points from our members of the public wanting to have that be a transparent process, I think is, you know, fair and legitimate. I do see a couple of, or I did see a couple of hands from staff. Pugh, your hand is still raised, so let's go to you at this point. Welcome, Pugh Osh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a point. People that are in need generally don't like to speak up in public about their needs. You know, having that be, you know, it does thwart some of that conversation. I did want to point that out. You know, to the extent that there would be a transparent process, of course, the whole meeting would be recorded from start to end, and would be made available online. However, for some people to articulate their needs, it gets harder when there is a public involved that might be judging them for what their needs might be. I did want to make that point to the council. And with that, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
I see. I appreciate that point, Pugh. And it is, it is well-considered. That is a good point. I would, you know, examine the totality of the group and, you know, wonder whether there may be internalized pressures as well that may be represented within the group that might be offset by a sense of openness. So I think that there are always competing tensions in terms of whether we can, you know, proceed in the idea that we want to make sure that people are providing open and effective communication. So Jim, I did see your hand raised as well. Before I go back to council and ask for a motion prior to further deliberation, I want to check in with you. Mr. Mayor, did you have anything to add?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I was just, as Andy was saying, it's really was for discussion of those topics about the group, not, not the, oh, it just went out of my brain. Sorry. Not, Andy, help me out. What was that?
Yes, not the question about whether or not the stakeholder group should be a part of our community engagement, but rather, is this, will this list suffice? Does this list represent?
That's what we were trying to get at tonight. So thank you for helping me with that one.
Okay. Oh, very good. I mean, for my own part, my sense of it is that if we were to go ahead and provide that access, you know, in real time, that would very much satisfy the requirements of making sure that people had a sense of knowing what's going on as it is going on. So, you know, whether you record that and people hear it later, or allow that to happen, you know, simultaneously, I think people are familiar enough with the Zoom seminar format in the last year to, you know, get that sense of, you know, comfort. And I think there is a sense of detachment, frankly. You know, if you're listening in and then the participants know that you don't actually have the ability to, you know, to say anything that they could hear. So let me go to the Vice Mayor, followed by Councilmember Moore, followed by Councilmember Willie. What I will do is ask for a motion to be placed on the table. And so Vice Mayor, do you have a motion that you can present to us in order?
I have a motion written, but before we proceed any further on the stakeholder group, I would like my answers, my questions answered, which is to show me why this particular type of stakeholder group satisfies HCD requirement. I have not seen any evidence. I have not, no one has told me which city used this particular format, or which certified housing element used this particular format. Without that answer, I don't know why it has to be this way. And whether or not this is on the council agenda to approve the format or not, the very idea, the last time, this was on the council agenda in November 16th, I went to watch the meeting, and it was never mentioned the stakeholder group was for the formatively fair housing, and the format was never mentioned. So this format was never presented to the council. And I don't see why the staff or consultant is insisting that this format should not be determined by the council, because this should have been a part of the November 16 agenda. It wasn't clearly presented then. I have my motion, so should I propose it now, or should, what, does the staff has an answer for my specific question on the validity of this group?
Yes, let me bring it to Andy and our staff to answer your questions there.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Chow, I strongly recommend that you watch the video that is part of the, that was linked to the staff report. I included it specifically for you, in part because of the very engaging questions that you asked throughout this process. But in watching that video, and it was just released, just in this last couple of weeks, and it's HCD staff. and it's it's HCD staff and and leadership within HCD saying, we can't tell you exactly how to incorporate the ideas that will lead you to our approval and certification specifically for AFFH. The other thing that they made clear is that they cannot tell us, um, which cities to look to. And in fact, if we get caught copying or trying attempting to do something exactly like another city has done, then we won't be able to do something that that is tailored for Cupertino. That is their requirement. They understand that it's a very gray area, the kinds of things that they're asking for. And yet it's also a very high bar. Because in order to, um, meet their standards, it has to show that we are beginning to dismantle.
And then I need evidence this particular format fits Cupertino and why. Why, uh, I mean, the other, we are not copying, but at least we should have some successful model to look towards. If Noah is using this format, how do you know HCD would approve this format? You don't. And this format doesn't even fit Cupertino. There is no evidence of that. So I don't understand.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. It's it's, um, this is, uh, this is territory that, uh, has not yet been, um, explored. So particularly for a highest resource community. So we're not going to be able to bank on what has come before us and and what other cities similar to us. What we know is that we put out eighty, excuse me, eighty individual invitations for all different kinds of groups, including, I do want to mention, um, Councilmember Moore, all of our faith leaders within Cupertino, received an email, all of those who who we have, um, contact information for. We have sent out invitations wide and broad. What we know is that we we need to, in the end, have a housing element document that is responsive to the understood need within Cupertino. Not just Cupertino, though. It has to be within the region because because that is what is necessary for a highest resource community.
Okay, um, well, Vice Mayor Chow, if, um.
I have a motion. Should I propose?
Okay, please, please, um, bring forth your motion.
Okay, so here. Uh, my motion is first, uh, that's from the Strategic Advisory Committee, as staff suggested, consisting of two council members and the Planning Commission Chair and the Housing Commission Chair. Second, um, direct the staff to create a community engagement plan and then presented to the, uh, working with Strategic Advisory Committee. Community engagement plan include outreach channels and website information. And the create, um, a formatively furthering fair housing engagement plan. This plan should include everything we would ever do under this, um, guidance, including the West Valley Community Service Biweekly Meetings, um, their purpose and scope and focus group meetings to include the protected groups that in the HCD guidance. Here is a table that's included in San Jose's, um, document that in their plan for formative fair housing, I borrowed it from there, of different groups we should try and reach out to. And I think we should consider geographical diversity, ethnic diversity, faith group diversity, age diversity, work experience diversity, housing experience diversity, income diversity, and so on. And I think all the applicants for the proposed stakeholder group are very engaged advocates who are willing to commit more than eight hours a meeting. I really appreciate that. However, HCD specifically wants us to reach out to people who don't have that time to commit. And I think that we should have a plan for that. So let's utilize the stakeholder group applicants to help provide input to come up with, uh, affirmatively furthering fair housing engagement plan. So that's my motion.
Okay, would anyone like to second Vice Mayor Chow's motion? And I'll go just go by order of hands at this time. I see Councilmember Willie, your hand is raised. Did you want to second Vice Mayor Chow's motion?
Yes, I I do. Thank you. Sounds good.
Okay, uh, well, let me go to our city manager. Uh, Jim, you have your hand raised.
Yes.
At this time.
Well, a couple of things. So one, you know, this group we're talking about on the stakeholders, they're not picking sites or anything. So I just want to make sure it's, they're just trying to give input over the whole, the whole process. The other one was that we can look at, you know, showing the video. It wouldn't be an interactive because we don't want anyone pressuring someone else who's on this stakeholder committee. Um, in the current motion up here, I I'd have to look to Andy, but I I don't think it fits our timing. We don't have the staff. Um, this is familiar to me from other cities that have much greater staffing than than we do currently. So I don't know if if Andy, if I'm speaking out of turn, I I just don't see this as being something we can possibly get to and and complete.
I I find it in some ways very aligned with our with our goals as as it stands. I'm I'm having a hard time seeing how this is different than, um,
I mean, you need to do this be be by like June or whatever. I I just, I just think this is going much farther than we probably should go, so.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for the input. And I I do still have, um, hands raised from Councilmembers Willie, Moore, and Wei. Um, I I'll make note of the time. Uh, we're at seven thirty-six. Um, I I will start the, uh, special meeting at seven forty-five, at seven forty-five. So, um, let's, uh, keep your comments succinct. And Councilmember Willie, we'll start with you.
Yeah, so I'm I'm very sensitive to that there are a lot of people that are hesitant to speak up um, and talk in front of other people. But I think that really goes right to the point of if have a group, have a bunch of groups that reflect many of the different demographics. If if we have a group that represents the, uh, the disadvantage, we have a group that represents the housing insecure. You know, if there's seven or eight people in that group, I think it's going to promote them sharing their thoughts as opposed to one person uh, in a group of ten that have vastly different, um, backgrounds. So I I do like the motion that's on the table, and, uh, I think it can be achieved. We might have to increase the budget for Andy to get some help. I would be supportive of that in the sense that this is huge for our community. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Next, we have Councilmember Moore.
Okay, um, thank you, Mayor Paul. So I was wondering if, uh, well, first, I'm gonna just add a little bit of information. There was a link to Monterey's Monterey Park's, um, housing element, uh, in in our package. And I just want to kind of compare us to Monterey Park, almost the same size population. Uh, but our median income is a hundred and seventy-one thousand, um, nine hundred and seventeen dollars median household income versus Monterey Park, sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars, thirteen percent living in poverty there, six percent in poverty here. So we are a much wealthier, um, uh, community. So I I just thought that was kind of interesting to have it there. My question for the Vice Mayor is, are are you are you looking to recreate a stakeholders group? Is that is that your ultimate goal? Um, just quick, yes or no?
No, I I hope to have focus groups. Just a small focus group for to interview, um, different, uh, people. And the stakeholder group members or the applicants too. The stakeholder group can who have connections and they can help, uh, suggest groups or people to outreach to. I understand that Andy sent out, um, and many emails with no reply. But a lot of times it takes personal connection to try and gather people to come and voice their opinion.
Okay, okay.
My idea. It's similar to what, uh, focus specific plan has done, I think.
Okay, okay. And that and that did have its pluses and and definitely had it had its minuses. Um, but I do think that that there are some excellent, um, protected classes here that that need to be, uh, have outreach towards, uh, military veteran status, medical conditions, all all sorts of things here. So I think that that's that's great. Um, I do have a problem, which I've already stated. It's that there's already been interconnection between stakeholders um, uh, on this very topic. And so for for that, I I I do have a problem. And I I think I stated that pretty clearly, but I can I can definitely support, um, your motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, one thing. So having a plan like the community engagement plan saves us time. Because we've had complaint after complaint that they didn't get 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 message. If we don't have a plan, we'll come back one or two months later, and we are still not outreach enough. Having a plan saves us time and speeds things up. And having a plan, overall plan of how to reach out to vulnerable groups saves us time too. And now, I'd rather than West Valley here, stakeholder group there, what else? We will come up later. Let's have an overall plan of what entirely we would do and then execute that plan.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Let's go to Councilmember Wei. And, uh, Hung, you'll need to unmute your microphone.
Sorry, you think I would have learned. Okay, I'm a little confused. Um, this motion is fine because it 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 includes a lot more groups, but doesn't mean that we're not going to. It looks to me we're doing redoing everything outreach. So what I would really propose is we we propose to be, we add people to this group. Uh, because according to Andy, he had reached a lot of, he has tried, you know, postcards and reached this. And this is the group that's, um, you know, coming up with a blind, um, thing, but, um, maybe we could approve Plan B to add ten more people so it's more inclusive. And we can move forward on this. To restart this process, I'm afraid I I would think that as our city manager says, we're going to be lacking the final time. And Andy did said this kind of aligned with what he had done. So maybe just do more to it and approve Plan B.
Uh, thank you for the comment, Councilmember Wei. My understanding of option B is that the ten additional stakeholder candidates would come from the list of people that have already gone through the current process. Is that correct? And I see a head shaking from Andy. So did you want to speak to that, Andy?
Uh, that would, so it's not necessarily that it would be the, uh, ten from the list of applicants. Um, and it it's not necessarily, it's not necessary that the ten be selected today. In other words, we could keep up an open recruitment. Uh, my my idea with with this, um, stakeholder group, as I mentioned earlier, is to have panels, to have, um, and and Vice Mayor Chow, this might meet some of the goals that you're sharing with your motion. And I I value and appreciate that you shared, um, uh, with such passion, what what you'd like to see. That, um, that the the panels could in effect be the kinds of focus group. One of the things we want to make sure of is those who are in in most need, uh, as you mentioned, a concern for their time. We want to make sure that we're not extractive or exploitive of those who are most in need. They are often the least likely to have an opportunity to show up at meetings like tonight's meeting or even a stakeholder meeting. So what we would like to do is to have those stakeholder meetings be open to an additional ten people, maybe at each meeting. And those ten people, we can share with you how they meet this, um, this list as you've shared it with us. And and as we know, we want to make sure that we, um, increase the diversity as much as possible through the process.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Uh, it it does seem to me, uh, with a motion on the table and a second, uh, we've heard the comments from our council members. Um, we're coming up right on seven forty-five right now. Um, I'm going to go ahead and, uh, call for a vote on the motion on the table. Um, and so, uh, I do see two further hands raised. I will note that under our rules of order, you effectively do need four people to, uh, call for the a vote, i- if that becomes a a motion to challenge it. Um, and so Vice Mayor Chow, do you not want to call for a a vote at this point? Is that why your hand is raised?
Oh, no.
Okay, Councilmember Wei, uh, did you want to not call for the vote at this time?
No, uh, because I have a question.
Oh, okay.
On the vote, on the motion.
I'm sorry? Well, once again?
I need a clarification on the motion.
Okay, please, um, ask your question, and I'll just allocate another couple of minutes for this.
Okay, my question is, are we not accepting this group? Are we, it looks like this motion is to restart everything. Uh, I I would think, uh, I'd like to make a substitute motion to include, to accept this group and add ten more people.
Okay. Um, is there a second for Councilmember Wei's substitute motion? I don't see a second or a hand raised at this time, uh, so the substitute motion is not placed on the table. Um, so, uh, this is what I'll suggest. I I think that, given the importance of this process, we in all likelihood have a relatively quick turnaround, uh, for revisitation as to next steps. But let me go ahead and having a, um, a motion on the table, uh, because we have heard from our staff and our outside consultant with regard to, uh, where we stand right now. Uh, but I think if we want to tangibilize the specific next steps, we probably need to have, um, you know, a a fairly quick follow-up as to what this looks like, uh, logistically. Uh, assuming that this motion does pass. Um, but let's, uh, let's deal with that after the vote. Um, Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote on this motion?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, uh, thanks very much. Um, you know, no one, no one promised a, um, facile process. And I I think that everyone is very much engaged here. Um, let us, uh, convene with our our city staff. Uh, I'll confer with Jim, uh, as to next steps, as to what makes sense. I I, you know, I note that our, um, next regular, uh, council meeting is, uh, next Tuesday. Um, but I I don't know whether we'll have enough, uh, of a turnaround at this point since our agendas are generally published on Wednesday, um, which would be tomorrow or no later than Thursday, which would be the next day. But um, we'll we'll, um, you know, figure out the next step. Councilmember Moore, I do see your hand raised. Did you want to make a brief comment at this time before we adjourn to our next special meeting?
Uh, I, thank you, Mayor Paul. I'm just wondering when the Strategic Advisory Committee Councilmember, um, selection would be taking place.
Oh, you know what? I think that's an excellent point. Um, I I'll entertain a motion for the identity, the identities of the council members uh, that are, uh, on this Strategic Advisory Committee, uh, as, uh, it is described in Vice Mayor Chow's motion. And, uh, Councilmember Wei, your hand is raised.
I'm sorry, uh, Mayor Paul, um, are you suggesting we nominate two at right now?
That's absolutely right, because the other two are already identified as the, um, chairs of the Planning Commission and the Housing Commission.
Okay, so can I have one minute to say I would like to nominate myself? Because, um, I I do believe that this council, um, needs a broad representation. It looks like I'm the only one who lives on the west side of the city, if we have to say east-west. And I do, I'm very familiar with our to- to- to poverty in all the cities area, but especially in this area. And I want to say, um, I do believe that east-west needs to be balanced. And I have a lot of, um, experience. And I know where we can put more housing in this area in the west side. So I would love to be on the representation. Um, I would like to recommend myself.
Thank you, Councilmember Wei. And we have Councilmember Moore.
Um, thank you, Mayor Paul. I'd like to nominate the Vice Mayor.
Okay, um, all right. So so you're nominating the Vice Mayor, Councilmember Wei, uh, would like to nominate herself. And so uh, would would anyone else, um, like to serve on this subcommittee? Uh, Councilmember Moore, your hand is raised again.
Um, I I would like to serve on this committee. I think that, uh, digging into the the rules and having them, um, equitably applied across the city, uh, would would be a wonderful challenge. And I think it's going to be a bit time consuming going through, um, what HCD has. And, uh, I I'm willing to do it. And I I think it would be a benefit to the city if I do.
Okay, well, thank you, Councilmember Moore. There are are actually three nominations right now for two spots. And I I misspoke. It's not uh, coined as a subcommittee. It is coined as a committee. And so, but I I don't have a a motion on the table, however, with regard to. And so, but I, I don't have a, a motion on the table, however, with regard to, um, a potential slate for the subcommittee. Would anyone like to bring forth that? Okay, well, it's, it seems like without, uh, you know, being, being overly shy about it, let me, let me go ahead and, um, suggest, um, I, I, I'll go ahead and put forward a motion, uh, to have our Vice Mayor and Councilmember Moore serve as our members of the subcommittee, uh, that was, uh, empowered by the prior motion. Is there a second for that motion? And Councilmember Wei, your hand is raised?
I, I do recommend myself, but I would like to ask Council, uh, if Vice Mayor Chow really want to serve on it. If she does, I would second the motion.
Okay, well, thank you, Councilmember Wei. That's, that's greatly appreciated. Um, and Vice Mayor Chow, did you want to speak to that? Um, with regard to?
Yeah, I think Councilmember Wei does have a point that she lives on the west side. Um, I am just, so how, but I'm, I did, and I did spend, I will, I already spent a lot of time reading a lot of documents. And whether I'm on the subcommittee or not, I will be spending a lot of time probably. And, and Councilmember Wei probably is not as familiar, so I wonder. And even in back in two thousand fourteen, I spent a lot of time reading through, um, general plan and EIR and all those things. So I don't know, um, Councilmember Wei, do you have time to read through all the documents? And did you read the HCD guidance memo on?
Actually, I do watch, I did watch the videos. I spent a lot of time on this, on the new information. So I do think I'm
Our video, I mean the guidance memo, the legal document.
Well, you know what? I do believe that this
The video usually doesn't have all the details.
Well, okay, so I probably haven't done that, but I am a very diligent person. So I do believe that my record shows that I'm very, very responsible for what, uh, job is taken to me. But if you really want it, I will nominate you. But I'm just saying that I do feel that this, this strategic plan needs, uh, representation from us, just like any strategic plan, we need representation from all different places. And I do believe that, you know, I, because I heard so much that said, people on the west side don't, it's not fair. They don't want housing. I don't believe that. I think I represent a very good side of the west side that we do want to take responsibility of the housing and the strategies and to make it happen. So I will
So you will, you will read all the legal documents. That's necessary to, to set
So really, if you want to do it, that's okay. I can really recommend it. I can, I, I'm okay, you know? But I, I do believe that I can be a good representative on this, uh, Strategic Advisory Group.
Yeah, I don't have to be on the committee, subcommittee, so. I think Councilmember Moore, uh, will represent, uh, as well, and she will read a lot of documents.
Um, I, I do have a, a hand raised from, uh, Councilmember Moore, but, but also the, um, outside consultant, Andy. Andy, did you want to, uh, make a brief comment at this point?
Uh, just a, a very brief, uh, request. I just want to make sure that those candidates who were listed this evening and discussed and, and considered, I just want to make sure that their participation going forward would be without prejudice from the council.
I, you know, I would be happy to add that to the motion explicitly, that there is no prejudice, uh, going forward, uh, as to this process, this evaluative process. Um, Councilmember Moore, you have a hand raised?
Uh, it, it's still my, my preference to, um, have the Vice Mayor serve, especially given, uh, the fact that she already has, uh, an, an advantage of having done, uh, a significant amount of, of research. Uh, and, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm very, very concerned about our ability to get our housing element certified, um, and, and along with the, the challenges that I'm looking at with regards to, to SEQA, um, given, um, the VAALCO project and, and what's already been studied, um, previously about that. So, um, I, and I've also, uh, worked with, um, the Vice Mayor now for over, oh, well, a long time, um, but over a year on the, on the LRC. And, uh, we don't necessarily, you've seen us. We don't necessarily see things the same way. We bring things from different, different positions. And, uh, um, and I think that's, uh, it's actually a really great quality to, to have that. So we're not, uh, we're not, uh, the same, uh, giving the same answer. Um, so I think, um, personally, I would, um, stick with, uh, the, the Vice Mayor. And, and, and we can enjoy the fact that she's already of her own volition dug into many, many things, uh, in a very detailed way already. Thank you.
Councilmember Wei, your hand's raised?
Okay, so, um, I understand what Councilmember Moore says, uh, but I want to say it one more time. I do believe we need to work together on a, uh, more broader perspective. And I do believe I represent a different group of people that, um, you know, we have, we want to advance housing, but we also want to collaborate with what our community says. So I do believe east-west side needs to be sort of represented. And I'm a very good study, and I'm really diligent. But I am going to leave this to, uh, Vice Mayor Chow's preference. If she really wants to be it, I would second Councilmember Moore's, um, uh, motion.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Wei. So, uh, Vice Mayor Chow, we're back at you. And so, uh, you have to vote either way, if you want to be on the committee or not. Um, my motion on the table is nominating yourself and Councilmember Moore. Um, so without getting into
Councilmember Moore makes a good point. This particular one is pretty tricky. And you really need to learn, not only the code, but also how HCD interprets it, uh, how learn from other TT cities' experience. And and, uh, we, very vague answers often does not satisfy me. And then if it doesn't, when it comes to the council agenda, I'm going to spend a lot of time. So maybe it's better that I just serve on the subcommittee. But then I think, like what I did for the work program today, I will outreach to residents who are on the different side. I think we will have the Community Engagement Plan to make sure that we engage, uh, everyone for, uh, in every part of the city. Um, but the Strategic Advisory Committee really is not, is really to help the council, uh, to dig, to get all the background information, just so that when it comes to the council, we have good background information for the council to make decision on. I think that's the role. And we are not going to make decision in the subcommittee. So, yeah, I, I will start with Councilmember Moore.
So I will second Councilmember Moore's motion.
Uh, that was actually my motion, um, Councilmember Wei. So
I'll second your motion.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Um, okay, so, uh, I greatly appreciate that. So in the interest of time, um, let me, um, move this along. Uh, and, and just very briefly say, you, you, you know, I sincerely hope for a successful process here. I, I think that by, you know, putting our heads together, we can, um, come up with something that's, um, you know, that, that, that's both, uh, complete and, um, you know, satisfying to the, the, you know, entire spectrum of stakeholders. It's going to take a fair amount of work, but we're already committed to that. So, um, you know, without going into the specifics of, um, you know, each iteration that's presented, we have one that's in front of us, uh, a slate of Vice Mayor Chow and Councilmember Moore. Uh, Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised. Is it, um, procedural? And perhaps you did indeed bring the motion. I don't know. Uh, but I thought I did.
No, no, it's not. I just, I, I just want, wanted to say that I see us as a team. We have a significant project ahead of us. We need to, to succeed at this, uh, all together. And, uh, you, you know, more power to us. Good luck.
Okay, and, uh, the motion on the table, uh, includes the, the language that, um, that Andy was requesting uh, with regard to not having prejudice, uh, with regard to the original, uh, listed slate of people that, uh, weren't, uh, were, they weren't correlated with their, um, applications, but had a, uh, a, a list of names. So, uh, just to confirm with you, Councilmember Wei, uh, do you accept that as part of the motion, as the seconder of that motion?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. And so, um, I apologize for, uh, the delay. I think that was, uh, an important, um, you know, fifteen minutes to, uh, to have, uh, to move this process forward. So let's go ahead and, um, go to, uh, we adjourned this, uh, special meeting that started at six o'clock. Uh, we are going to now, um, open the meeting that is noted for seven forty-five PM with, again, apologize, uh, apologies for, uh, starting this meeting late.